It's calling the meeting. It's half past six. Looks like we have a quorum. All the members, all seven members are here tonight. So you all should have copies of the agenda, I hope.
Yeah.
And let's make a motion, whether you accept it or not.
I move we accept.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the agenda is written. All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. You should all have a copy of the minutes from October night.
I make a motion that the minutes be accepted as presented.
Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Five, zero, zero. What are minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, the first on the agenda is approval and signing of a subdivision application. Trauma trip, ten lot subdivision. If my memory serves me right, Brian, you had reclusive yourself from that?
Yes.
And I believe Leanne, the voting member.
Yes.
Randy informs that we have the fee for that. And you should all have letters from Mr. Gillaway. Just to backtrack a little bit. The subdivision was approved with a condition under Articles 10.8 and 2.0. A letter of credit would be submitted to the planning board. And as you all probably know, under Article 11, 11.1, conditions and amount of a performance guarantee shall be determined by the board with the advice of the road commission. And that's what you should have in your hand, the advice of the road commission.
Has the guarantee been delivered to the board?
James has that letter. That's attached to it.
That's his one, yeah. This says that they have $100,000 in their bank account.
Right.
Nothing that's guaranteed for this project. Irrevocable letter of credit, which we asked for on the other ones.
Right. If you look at James's reply.
I read James's reply.
And he seems to say that that is sufficient.
And I look at the subdivision. First of all, I wanted to ask this thing. What is the cost, let's say, for the road improvements and the water? I think those are the two.
I gave an estimate that didn't match $100,000, to be honest with you. I was up a little bit higher than that.
And that's the figure I'm asking for. I had one in the back of my mind.
Correct. I don't have it with me. However, our owner is going to do some of the work himself, is my understanding.
That's right.
Yep.
The number I used, to be honest with you, is $200, $225,000, a linear foot of road. That would be the number I was using, with utilities underground.
Yeah, I mean, the same.
I don't know what that equates to right off the top of my head, but.
Why did I have a number I thought was like $270,000?
I thought it was more like $240,000 or $250,000, right around there, somewhere around there. I think we're in the same ballpark.
Not an equivalent of about $20,000.
No, no, neither am I. But him doing the work himself, that does save money, so. I totally understand what you're saying.
Yeah. And I go back and maybe we have the, I just looked at, I went through this, whether they're going to be private or public. I just looked at all streets of subdivisions are designed and constructed to meet the following standards. The street according to classifications determined by the planning board. And whether it's public or private, I think that they should be built to subdivision standards.
Not only that, we are going to also test the compaction for density and grain size.
Yeah.
To make sure that we have documentation that shows that.
Right.
Should this ever.
And that's just what we want.
Then that'd be foolish of him not to do that.
We already have a good example of that.
Right, I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do.
It didn't get tested, didn't go through.
But we use SW coal for all our stuff that involves geotechnical.
Yep, and I think that's great, that's just what should be done.
Yep, I agree.
Now, whether the $100,000 in a bank account covers that, there's not an irrevocable letter of credit. I think of one of them that we did, it was a St. Clair subdivision. He was going to do the work himself and stuff. He had to come up with a, he came up with a $100,000 irrevocable letter of credit on it to cover it. The idea being is not to, whether you can do it, whether it's a letter of credit or a bond, we've covered, we did several of the other projects there. We covered paving in particular. They had a bond covering paving or something. But doing the work, it's going to be the subdivision done, whether it's public or private, follow the subdivision standards. And if it's $220,000 or $240,000, I think it should be there, it covers it. The idea being that the subdivision will be built to the specs on it. And covered there, the town won't get stuck with it, or someone else, whatever unforeseen things happen. That the homeowners or people down there, someone else, or the town won't get stuck with it. We won't wind up with a bog hill where we pick up the tab for it.
I understand.
And he has done a, I'd like to see that, even $100,000 be a, a letter of credit, irrevocable letter of credit. But rather than just in the bank account. I don't know what could happen. Probably good, you do the work himself, good. And whatever dude to cover it, so it covered it and it follows the subdivision ordinance. I heard George says, you know, have you been to the town manager? We've got good examples there.
No, no, I, believe me, I totally understand what you were saying. I completely understand.
Whatever that amount is, now, the power company will take care of the utilities, won't they?
Yeah, but they're going to, they're going to charge the advocate. You get on the phone the first time, they want to check.
And I know the water, they've got to put in, I just look at the water in the road in particular.
Exactly.
And they can always go solar, as the power.
Oh, I thought you said water, so.
Yeah, I was, water, water in the road.
When I discussed with Kathy Reynolds at Banker Savings, the option of getting the irrevocable letter of credit, what she said was, they, he had $250,000 sitting in the account from the owner of the property. And she said, well, that doesn't matter, we're still going to treat it as a loan. She said, that's the only way they handle that, an irrevocable letter of credit. And that didn't make any sense at all. So in other words, he was going to be paying a $500 application fee. He's going to have to make the application to the bank for a loan of $250,000. And that's where the heels just got dug in by the owner of the property, he said, this is insane, that the money was sitting in the account.
I'm probably going from memory and I'm going back on another one, but I think I know the St. Clair subdivision, we, with that, we were talking about a bond or something like that. He did have money in the bank and that was sent in there as a letter of credit that covered it. And I don't know how the rest of it works with the bank, or which bank it was at the time, without going through it.
It's standard practice.
I didn't think it charged a thing, but the bond was going to be more expensive.
The bond was dramatically more expensive. I think there was something like a $60,000 fee on it. I mean, it was also crazy when, considering the money was going to be available.
Yeah. If he's got the money there, that, you know.
My understanding is very liquid. He's.
Yeah, it could be.
But I mean, here of the town, not me.
A lot of people are very liquid and all goes south.
Agreed.
Unexplained. And looking out on the town, thinking what we've done in the past on things.
Right.
And not always good. Most of the time there, we have covered, we have covered some of it to do the road. And some of it we've just covered on pavement, as we progress of these things. We probably should have done more in the standards. That's just, that's my thought on it. I think it should be built to standards, and, which obviously you're going to do. I have good faith in that. So we build it to the standards and we cover that expense with some kind of financial guarantee that it will be completed. And if all confidence is well, the technical capacity to do it, and you will do it, and he does it, you know, and it comes under there. Things happen to people. And want the project completed.
In James's letter, he says it will. He's going to inspect it, the predetermined benchmarks, and also ensure that the road is built to subdivision standards.
Yep.
So that's taken care of.
And that's just what we want to do and that should be done. And the one that we have a problem on, that did not happen.
We didn't, we didn't ask for that to happen.
I caught a back and forth, you know, it didn't happen, so.
Right, that's in the pen.
So this is covered, and we had, we spelled it on the other subdivisions, I think, Randy, and was it this one? He was going to be, going to follow these things, so I think a lot of them, they know subdivision, they would follow it. So I think we clean up that mess, George. And I don't see that there should be any difference whether it's going to be public or private, as to how you do the guarantee. It's going to be a public one, you build it to subdivision specs, and you guarantee that it's going to be built to those specs, you know, financially. And if it's going to be private, you build the subdivision specs and you guarantee it's going to be built to it.
We already have that guarantee. Don't we?
The financial guarantee?
No.
That's what I'm going, no, I'm talking the financial, it's different. Not technical. Technical, I find, then we're out of it. It's going to be built to subdivision specs. Now it's a question of how much you're going to finance on it.
Yeah. Town manager says that what he has, yours is sufficient.
I read that, I read it, and I disagree.
The board, okay.
I disagree, I think it should be covered for the amount of the project.
Can I ask a question? What, so what is the cost of letter of credit? It's only $500, or are we talking about a bigger amount?
No, then, then it's literally a bank loan. So they're charging, they're charging an interest rate on that as well.
Right.
I don't remember what she said on the interest, but it was, it's still, it's a bank loan.
They're charging, they're charging.
But that gives the cost of doing business, I mean, in doing this kind of project, which is substantial, I think that's a consideration that the owner has to entertain.
But he doesn't need a bank loan.
Well, then he needs to guarantee the funding is there and put it in escrow, perhaps. There must be another org, another way to orchestrate this, so that mon, those monies are there to guarantee that things are done properly. I have no doubt he's going to do it properly. And I understand Bruce's concern, I think it's valid, given the fact these things do happen. We, I mean, I don't see anything here that makes me think it won't happen the way it's described, but we always do these things and try to plan for the worst case scenario. And is the groundwork, obviously, we're getting into the end of the season, so this work won't happen now, will it? It'll happen in the spring, or what?
I can't speak for that.
Yep, again, he just returned on Saturday.
Sure.
I don't know exactly, but I think his intention is to start at least part of it at this end of the season.
Because you're drawing down the cost as the project goes ahead, so the fact, those monies, there is going to be, say, $250,000 tied up for six months, eight months. It may be $250,000 and then it becomes $125,000, and I would imagine, I mean, if, if we're being asked to make a determination here, I think we need to have a number that, if this is a major burden, what is the burden? What is the number? We don't have that number. We know it's $500 to start, and interest. You know, 10, if it's 10% interest on $250,000 for a year, that's $25,000 just in simple math, which is significant. And I don't disagree that that's a problem, but if the man has the money, why can't it be escrowed? In my simple mind, maybe I'm misinterpreting.
And it seems unreasonable to be charging interest on money that he has.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless they're paying an equivalent amount of.
But that's banking.
Well, not, I could see if it was a line of credit and he was drawing it down.
Yeah.
But if, even if it's a line of credit, if he doesn't use it, he shouldn't be paying anything.
That's right.
Except for maybe an application fee. So I'm a little confused on that.
When is the, this work projected to be finished?
I can't give you an answer on that.
Okay. But like in the spring?
Yes, hoping for one, one year, start to finish, I would, I would hope.
And then is he going to sell lots before it's finished, or?
I think the intention is to try and pre-sell something, if, if that's possible.
I think we have to have something. Because it would be inconsistent.
Taking home buyers too, a lot buyers.
Yeah.
They won't be stuck with the deal. Well, they'll have a road that's built, that's right.
Okay, I take it that this is not acceptable to the board? I think we should have a motion.
Maybe I stuck my nose out or something out the first time, I may as well make the motion. I make a motion that we get something that is more permit, whether it's in escrow, irrevocable letter of credit, or something like that, that cannot be changed, if he has the funds to cover the projected cost of the road and the water line down there. And if that's, you know, I think you're in the ballpark, I don't want to put the number there now, if you want to come back with me.
I had a two and a quarter, right in that area. That's per linear fund, that's what I had the whole project at.
Sounds reasonable to me, I know it when it came up, but I'd go with that number.
What's the number again, sorry?
Two and a quarter.
Two and a quarter, thank you.
$225,000.
Just a big time. I'd like in the motion before what happens. Before we sign, sign this? It's already been approved.
It's already been approved and that's one of the conditions.
Right. Now, do we sign, sign the milars? Or do you want to wait?
I think you sign them and you hold them, or you don't sign them at all, one of the two.
What do you want to do? Part of the motion.
We want to do it, when we get the money, we sign the milars.
No, we're not getting the money.
Well, with letter of credit. Whatever it's going to be.
You don't want to sign the mora law, the milars, until that happens, is that what you're telling me?
We should be able to get the milars. Do we have to call special media to sign the milars?
Yes, we do.
Why? Why can't we come in and sign them?
I don't want to do it that way, Bruce. Everything, I want to have it above the board.
I guess what I want to do, if we're going to, I don't have a.
It only takes seven days to do a special meeting.
That's fine. We need to do a special, or we sign them, but then I just want to say that the board should verify that, okay, we got what we were, what we were requesting.
You want the letter of credit.
It's a letter of credit, or in escrow.
In escrow.
Something that's, that's, just having $100,000 in his checking account is not what I call protecting the town's interest. Or cash on hand, or if it's $250,000.
I certainly don't disagree with you.
You could, you could take that, whatever, one good night at Hollywood Casino. I'm not, I'm just being facetious, but.
There's three types of guarantees, according to the ordinance.
Yep.
So you want one of those types, right?
Any one of those, it suffices.
Can I play devil's advocate?
No, Tom, we're in discussion, you really don't, you really can't give us your opinion on anything. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead, folks.
We're discussing on the motion.
I'll second it.
Well, so, what are we doing with the milars?
My, my thing would be, we call, when we have the guarantee that's satisfactory to the board, we sign the milars as a special meeting.
That's satisfactory to the ordinance.
Yep.
George, can you please enumerate what the three guarantees are?
Yeah, certified check payable to the municipality, or a savings account, or certify, or certificate of deposit naming the municipality as the owner. Performance bond payable to the municipality issued by a surety company, approved by municipal officers for the town manager. Or an irrevocable letter of credit.
What about escrow?
No.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Five, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
No, I voted.
I voted.
Oh, you did, okay. It's five, zero, zero?
I mean, you don't have to vote.
I voted.
Yeah.
Five, zero, zero.
Okay, so we're, we're going to have a special meeting to sign them in?
Yep.
Okay.
If you like to do it that way, or, you know, we sign and not come into it individually, that's fine. And that's fine, we go to special.
It's only seven.
Seven days is not a problem.
Okay.
The ball, the ball's in his court.
It's in his court.
It's in his court now, it's time.
Hang on.
Return served.
Okay, thank you.
The faster he does it, the faster we'll do it.
Out of my hands, I know that much.
All right, very good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, let's move right along here. Finding effects for Ron Merethu.
Very complete, George. Extremely complete.
That's the applicants' copy.
We all agreed on these, we're all saying, and all you do is sign them.
I think you all had copies of these.
I didn't.
Yes.
Didn't you?
I don't think so. Maybe I did.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Brian, the voting member now?
What was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ron Merethu's application.
Yeah, no, I knew what.
Finding effects of confusing the law.
Want a copy of that?
No.
And Tom's a voting member. You'll sign it, because I'm, I rekeyed some of them.
No, I didn't get those.
Okay, is change in here?
No.
Bars. Types on. That's going to be the application.
What about it?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is shoreline zoning application for James Lackady. He was not here tonight. You want to proceed any, anyway with the application? Randy's talked to him to some extent about it.
He has legal rights under his, he's paid his fee, Randy?
Yes, he has.
He got a road control plan?
Yes.
We didn't have down as a site plan and all that, huh?
What's that?
You didn't have a.
I think Randy has a site.
You have a site plan? You got the photo. You have your photo. I was looking for deer on there, I didn't see them.
First of all, let me ask, does anybody have any bias or problems with voting, only the regular members with voting? So then Brian, you're back aboard.
Yep. There's a whole, there's a whole file, yeah.
Do you even have a site plan that you're showing me?
Yeah, there's one in green. There's one there that's good. Colors, and so. Right there. Nope.
The floor plan?
Right there.
Yeah. You had a floor plan?
No, no floor plan.
A site plan.
No.
But no of those were.
The floor plan I had was from, from the, from the tech guy. That's the floor plan, I was going to say, the tech guy. It's a three, it's a three-room building, two bedrooms and one other room. And a bathroom, actually.
How far back is that structure now, Randy?
75 feet.
75, you'll go back.
Approximately.
You'll go back 106.
Go 100, yeah. And I can go get my, I can go get my stuff on Half Moon Pond for that if we want. We're good, drawn up on that.
What do you mean?
Remember how I've drawn up all maps and, not map, but how I've drawn sketches of all the properties that I've worked on in Half Moon Pond and Shore Lake and all that? How much I drew it back from the high water map, right through the existing camp.
You should have this. It's not, it's in black and white. On the back of the second page.
Oh, there, this is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just mine.
There we go. This green to me. All was green. Green all was black, red was black.
Basically, what he's doing is taking, taking the existing camp and moving it back. Because he wanted, he wanted to jack it up and put a foundation under it, and I told him that wasn't possible because of the way the ordinances are written in shoreline zoning, and you guys are familiar with this anyway, or perhaps Tom, you are, but the rest of them are. In order to do that and put a full foundation, he has to move it back to the greatest fractal extent. Greatest fractal extent of shoreline zoning, anything 100 feet beyond. When he came in and talked to me about this, I told him what he'd have to do, and I met with John Collins from D E P, John and I went up and looked at the lot over. John found no problem with what he wanted to do, showed where he could set it back and stuff, and I relayed that information to Jim Lackady. And then Jim came in, oh, when was this, quarter? Oh, it was in October. And he came in with this plan, and the new plan, and all that you have in front of you. And a minor addition to it, which again, the addition he's putting on is still within the allowable in Half Moon Pond District. So everything is back, he will be having to move the septic tank. His system is way back, if you'll notice on that, during, his system is.
150 feet.
Way back, yep. So it's out of the shoreline zone, as far as shoreline zoning goes. That was approved, man, I can't remember when that was approved, it was approved '88 by the planning board and by the Lou at the time. So he's got a full-blown system in, and he has to move the tank, which, again, I told him, I says, you know, it's not a big deal. Tank will move. And that's why, because he was, didn't really consider moving the tank, he just wanted to keep the camp where it was, but tanks move, so it's not a big deal. So he did agree to move that back, and, so that's, that much of it.
They wanted us to get back to you?
Yes, I've got a, if you want to see it, they didn't send me a letter, but they sent, I text Herb, I don't know, it must have been after six this evening. And, let's see if I can find it.
I saw it, he did.
Herb.
Said it was approved.
Yeah, he said yes on it.
Yeah.
And he'll get us something in writing?
Yes, I put on that, okay, thank you, send me an approval tomorrow, just wanted to be prepared for the next meeting. So I have that for us tomorrow.
And this is not a new structure. It's a relocation, an existing one.
Yes.
So it does not get in the complication of the Half Moon Pond watershed ordinance, right?
Right.
So we can, we've done these things before, going back to the most practical extent.
Yep.
I move we approve the application.
No way.
You know, you got to go find it and say.
I had a question. So the 107 feet, that's the closest point of the structure after it's moved?
Yes.
To the high water point?
Yes.
Of the 106.
Yeah, I'm back here, it's 107.
Mine says 106.
It's 106, something on there.
And the ordinance requires 100 feet, right?
Yeah, so they're well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we got to do all the findings.
You got 107 feet from high water map, yes, Mark.
The minimum radius is a hundred, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I thought a hundred, he's doing it.
Yeah, okay.
As far, to satisfy the ordinance.
Yeah, so that's the, the water-facing side of the building is a hundred and seven.
Yes, yes.
So my question to you is, first of all, do you have enough information to either approve or deny this without the applicant being here?
I'd say we do.
Let's give this a motion then, in that fact that we do have enough information, and the application is complete.
I move we have enough information to act on this application despite their absence at this meeting.
And the application is complete.
And the application's complete.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor? Close. Five zero zero.
Thank you.
Okay. On page six of the Half Moon Pond Order. I can make copies if you don't, if you want to share them. It's under relocation. And as Bruce pointed out...
Thank you.
It conforms to the setback requirements to the greatest practical extent, with moving it back over a hundred feet. And I believe we have a copy in that of the subsurface wastewater disposal rules. Not the rules themselves, but who is the, the application. And if you note the application, we, I saw it, and I'm sure you all did, it takes into consideration a three-bedroom residence. Actually, for a year rent, I think. I believe it's, what'd you say?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms.
These properties still all come under the hundred-and-eighty-day rule, right, for Half Moon Pond?
Yes.
That hasn't changed.
Yeah. But, you know, all I'm saying is it...
Yep.
It was approved for that. The, the sub, the surface wastewater disposal was two-hundred-and-seventy gallons. So actually, what we're, what I want to get is a motion that we've determined that it does meet the setbacks requirements to the most possible extreme here.
So moved.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. On page ten of the Half Moon Pond Order. There's performance standards. Some of them are not applicable. Although I think maybe two might be. Goes A, three, J. So I believe we can take one motion on all of them, let's just go through it and say whether applicable or not. A is agriculture.
Not applicable.
Not applicable. Okay. B is runoff drainage and dry wells. I believe it's no change from the original house, and he has an erosion control plan attached.
Correct.
So do we want to say that that's been met temporarily?
Say it's met, yeah.
Because of that? The next one is on page twelve at the bottom, C, which is structures. There's on the page thirteen. Which takes into cluster developments and...
Not applicable.
Really not applicable, very good. Okay, and, and then if we drop down to D, subsurface sewage. Is applicable, and here again, it's, it's no change from what he's had there.
No changes, his disposal system, he's going to move the tank, so...
And then if we drop down to E, which is on page fourteen. Is roadway construction, according to Randy, there's no construction for a roadway there. So that would be not applicable, I believe. Then we hit F, which is timber harvesting, which is not applicable.
He's going to cut some wood, but I don't think so. I mean, yeah, it's...
Right, forest service, that's it.
Okay, and then G is, is not applicable, and it's seasonal conversions.
Not supposed to be doing that.
Right. H is waterfront common areas, which is not applicable also. I would be water quality, which there'd be no change. That's actually tied in with solid material runoff and precipitation. So it's really tied into, uh...
Stormwater runoff.
Storm, yeah. So what do you think about that? No change, or not applicable, or?
No change.
No change?
Easy to say.
Okay. And then there's one left, which is wetlands, J. Which is... Wetlands are subject to pertinent state and federal laws and regulations, well, we know that. Just a statement under J, so...
Was there any wetlands involved?
No.
No.
All high ground?
No.
So it's not applicable?
No.
Okay, so then, um... It looks like runoff, there was no change from the original house. And subsurface sewage was no change. And water quality was no change, so... But just like a motion saying that the performance standards that we covered, which are applicable, that there's no change.
I make a motion that all the performance standards we covered that are applicable were met.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay, so that takes us to the shoreline zoning ordinance. And we've already made a motion that the application, or the application is, is complete. We don't have to do that again. So then, then we're on page eleven of the shoreline zoning ordinance. And we have jurisdiction, the planning board has jurisdiction to review single-family homes in the Half Moon Pond District. So if we look under section fourteen, which is that table. And we go into one, two-family residential. And go across the Half Moon Pond, it has P V in there, planning board.
His permit.
So to me, that means that we have jurisdiction. So could I get a motion that says we have jurisdiction because of that?
So moved. Okay.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. And if you flip back to page seven. Top of the page. Section twelve, C two, relocation of non-conforming structures. And it basically says the same as it did under the Half Moon Pond ordinance.
So since we covered it under the Half Moon Pond ordinance, do we have to do it again here?
I wouldn't think so, I just want to make you aware of that.
Yeah, okay. So do we need a motion that we've already covered this under the Half Moon Pond ordinance?
No, we can refer to that if we...
Just, okay.
On page twenty-three. About a little more than five-eighths of the way down the page. After the submission of the complete application, planning board, board shall approve an applica, an application or approve it with conditions. And then there are nine standards listed there.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Page twenty-three, I think I did.
Thank you.
Mine's...
Pages different?
It's an old one.
I got an old one too, I don't know why.
Okay. It's...
It's section...
Section sixteen?
Motherhood and Apple Pond.
There it is.
D?
Right there.
Yeah.
It's twenty, page twenty.
Page twenty, and my, and my older version.
You must have the two thousand and nine version. Look in, look in the back when it was approved, Mark, the last...
Guess I gotta come in and get a new one. Two thousand and six.
Six, really?
Yeah. Guess it is one.
Well, I think.
I have here it's two thousand and four.
Well, yeah.
That's why they stiffened up this.
These are still the same, this one.
Yeah, yeah. They're all the same.
You got it.
Okay.
Want to take them individually?
Yeah, I think we do. So the first ones will maintain safe and healthful conditions?
Yes, it will, because they're moving it back. Could move the septic tank back, they still got the good root field, three-hundred-and-fifty feet back. Good shape.
Okay, is, that's a motion.
Yeah.
Is it moved in second? All those in favor?
That was a motion, that was the conclusion, it was why.
Right. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, D two is will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to the surface water.
And a normal withdrawal from.
That is met, good erosion control plan.
On that too, I will, I will put this in, that the contractor that is going to be doing this work is certified in shoreline zoning.
Yeah, members on that.
Yeah, two of them.
Yeah.
Certified.
Eleven ninety-four and eleven ninety-five.
Yeah. Those both are related.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those.
Doing the motion on each one?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, who made the motion?
I did.
Jason.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan, second. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Five zero, zero. Number three, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater.
He's putting, putting in a system, so...
No, the system's already there.
Yeah, well, he's moving a system and it's approved for what he's using it for, so... I make a motion, number three is met.
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Will not add adverse impacts on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, and other wildlife habitat.
Been met. The motion.
It's back far enough, there's no spawning grounds.
Yes, going back even further, give more room for the birds and wildlife in front. More room for shorebirds.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to island or coastal waterways.
Inland.
Waters.
Really no change, but that'd be met.
Well, he's reseeding the area that, um, he's moving the building from, so, um... I, I make a motion, it's been met.
Okay.
Second.
Yep. All those in favor?
This gentleman is one of those...
Five zero zero.
Opposite ones, he doesn't want any lawn, he wants to keep trees and everything else.
I wondered why he had such a small footprint out there.
Okay, number six, will protect agriculture, or archaeological and historical resources, is designated. There's none designated in the comprehensive plan for that area.
Not applicable.
So that's not applicable. Will not adversely affect commercial, there's no commercial face.
That is not applicable either.
Okay, eight, will avoid problems associated with flood plans, Randy?
It's not in the flood plan.
Yeah, he's not in the flood plan.
It's not applicable.
Okay.
Thank you, Bruce.
Is in conformance with provisions of section fifteen land use standards.
Correct.
Well, if we go to page twelve.
We're second. I was gonna say, we already went down through that fifteen, all those things.
Land use stands, the standard, section fifteen.
I'm seeing we have the matrix there.
And I don't, can you find that marked? I don't have the page number. It's fif, there are twelve in there.
Eleven in this one.
Okay.
Comes right after all the, the list.
I think we can do one motion on all these, but I think we should go through them individually.
What is the lot size of this, of this subject?
It's on the...
Two acres.
Two acres, yeah.
So it's, it's above these requirements. Sixty thousand feet would be about, let's see, two acres would be about eighty thousand.
Eighty-six thousand.
Yeah, so it's above all these.
It doesn't have a shore furniture.
No, it doesn't have a furniture.
It's a non-conforming lot.
Okay, it's a hundred-foot shore furniture, right?
Right. It's a non...
It's only ninety-five foot. It's supposed to be a hundred, we're right out.
Nine hundred feet right there.
That was one that should have been split. And they leave it up, they didn't, they turned it up one length. They didn't pull the tight tight.
No, up one length, it's like ninety-six feet.
Okay, yeah, that was my question, if, if you look at this, it says a hundred point six.
Yeah, that's what I got, a hundred feet and seven inches.
Seven inches.
It's a good angle. It's made it straight.
Yeah, but that, isn't that...
That's where you do it from, point to point, straight line, right, corner to corner. But I think you look at the... I knew where you got that one, the other, on the other map, it was ninety-five, you put down ninety-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think there's that one, recall that strip that went down there was a hundred and ninety feet, of course. And they split it too. Anyway, it's there now.
Yeah, it always has been a non-conforming law.
So it's there.
So it's, um... It's no more non-conforming than it was. Okay, then if you go to the next page, principal and accessory structures. Basically, the setback of, they're saying seventy-five feet is, what, a hundred feet in? I'm sorry, they're saying a hundred feet.
Yeah.
And it's a hundred.
Hundred and seven, hundred and six.
Yeah.
Take your pick.
Yeah. So it's in conformance with the principal and accessory structures.
Because Half Moon Pond is a great pond, right?
It's a non-conforming one, I could...
Right. If you go to C, which is piers, docks, forests, bridges, and other structures. Which I believe would probably mean not... Which I believe would probably be not applicable in this instance.
It's not changing anything on that end of it, no.
Okay, D is campground, campgrounds.
Not applicable.
Very good, individual private camp sites is E. Not applicable.
Not a campsite.
F is commercial and industrial uses.
Not applicable.
Not applicable. J is parking areas.
The parking is behind.
Yes.
The proposed relocation of the house, so I would say it's been met.
Yeah, it's at least twenty-five feet back.
Yeah.
Roads and driveways is H.
I was thinking the driveway is not changing, it's becoming shorter, so.
Existing driveway to remain, so it's been met.
It's met, it's an existing driveway. I is signage.
Not, not applicable.
Not applicable. J is stormwater runoff.
Now, you're getting up the whole middle of the driveway, it'd be all right.
Yeah. So that's been met, then, you take it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, a septic and waste and gray water disposal.
It's met, the septic is in.
There's no change, well, the only change is moving the tank back.
Yeah.
L is essential services.
No change.
M is mineral exploration and extraction.
Not applicable.
N is agriculture.
Not applicable.
Oh, we've covered before, which is timber harvesting. T is clearing of or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting.
It is minimal, and it's limited to that which is necessary. To expand. Or to relocate it.
To relocate.
It is met.
Okay. Q is erosion and sediment control.
They get two licensed contractors doing it, they're in shape.
They've got a soil erosion plan.
It's met.
R is soils.
What was that one?
The soil, R, soils.
And he's asking, I don't know, do anything? Move it back, I mean.
Kind of, kind of bind ourselves on that one, couldn't even have any information one way or another.
Well, the soils aren't changing from the way they were before, so. I think it's no change.
No change?
No change.
No change.
Okay, S, water quality.
It's not changing.
No change.
Okay. Archaeological sites, there aren't any.
Not applicable.
Okay. And I have a motion on section fifteen.
I make a motion that the conditions of section fifteen that are applicable have been met.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. Now that takes us back to section sixteen.
Of.
Number nine, under D. Which is in conformance with provisions of section fifteen.
Uh, yes, that's, I knew that's been met.
So then.
Per the last vote.
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. So then, can we say, get a motion on the total? Let's all be nine and sixteen. They've all been met, right?
All applicable conditions have been met, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Five zero zero. With that, take a motion on the whole shoreline zoning application, I think Bruce made one.
I second it.
All those in favor? Five zero zero.
So we're, we've now said that what, that motion was that the findings of facts have been met? Or that the application's been approved?
Application.
Application's been approved, okay.
We went down to all the findings.
There's gotta be a less cumbersome way to do that.
I know, I agree with you.
That's ridiculous.
We did it that way for a while, but you know, that would never stand up for its challenge, right? In that there's not precedent, but it was, it showed something that we did not have continuity.
No, I'm just saying, put them all in one, instead of going back and forth and back and forth in fifteen different places in the ordinance.
Well, we get the Half Moon Pond ordinance.
So we gotta vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Oh, we did, five zero zero.
I think we've got everything.
Good thing the applicant didn't come because they fell asleep.
You were, you know it.
You would've, you would've said that's a mighty fine sausage you just made.
Someone said to me, what do you do in the planning board? I said, we sign things.
Sign big checks.
Not our own.
Okay, CEO report, while you're signing that, I think you'll have copies of that.
This goes back, right?
Five of you have signed it, yes?
I guess so.
About five of us have signed it.
It goes back to, I guess.
Here's the file.
There's your file. You have a copy of the CEO report?
Oh, there you go. You didn't sign it, so.
No, I didn't sign it.
What was that?
Looks good.
It really looks nice.
Looks good, though, looks good.
Really nice job, I like this, man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that was, that was the eleventh hour, you wouldn't believe how my door rotated later.
And it even explains how to use it on the.
I did make a mistake, they always brought my attention on number two, it's not the historical society's preservation.
That's okay. We won't hold you to it. We won't hold it against you.
Good, I'm glad.
Does anybody have any comments? Well, Bruce, and Bruce is reading this.
Bruce read fast.
No, very nice report.
Yeah, I got a question, where was Andrew Austin going? He's posted around town quite a bit, hasn't he? It's East Main Street.
Dave Italian's building.
Oh, works.
You guys know, I know what Dave's building is.
Dave's building, yeah, Dave's building, Dave's world.
Where's the home occupation that needs the DOT?
Randy. What's that?
Where's the home occupation that needs the DOT?
The upholstery guy.
Randy Tango out on East Main Street, just up in the side of George's.
He just decided Bouchard's.
Yeah, okay.
He had a sign out there, they said he took a sign down.
Is that the same upholstery guy that? Is he gonna have, at one time or another, use every building on Main Street?
Jay Leno won't know where to come, will he?
Yeah, right.
They have one there across from Mary Seaton, does he give you any idea what he's gonna do on that?
Yes, I have an idea, he's looking at putting in renting, renting the house. For not a bed and breakfast, just, just one person to a time, or one family, or whatever, it's.
One tenant.
One, yeah, thank you. And then, once in a while, put up a tent to have a wedding or something like that.
That was the one they said, the event said. What about the house on the shore?
That's the one they're gonna do, the one on the shore, the one-way down, the new house.
Will you do the one on?
Uh, no plans ready at this point in time. They are, you know, planning on where the old camp is, no, the old cabin is down there. Plan on doing something.
Well, why don't we wait until we get the.
Is that the property next to the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay. Where they used to have, well, cabins down there.
Yes.
Okay.
Nothing come in on Rebecca's property?
No.
Anything come in on a property on the corner of.
Chris Kobe's.
Station, yeah. Chris Kobe's?
No.
Okay, are we done? For the CEO report?
Yep.
Move right along to other business. I have a letter, and I think you all got copies from Mr. and Mrs. Pistana. Okay, that's been turned over to the code enforcement officer, I'm sorry. To the town manager, because it's a request for public information. And he's the public information officer, so he's taking care of that. Okay, that's all I have, open to public, I see nobody from the public here.
Next meeting is.
No, wait, I have a question.
Sure.
As far as the discussion about this whole situation, we are not to discuss that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Any possibly pending legal, please do not discuss it. There's, there's a problem with ex parte communications. There's a problem with constitutional rights of one of the, either the applicant or of the person that is bringing it, whatever.
And that's on advice of counsel?
That's on the advice of counsel.
And you're referring particularly on this one to main materials?
Well, anything.
Yeah, but particularly, this is one that's in the status box now.
Right. And anything that's possible legal action, please do not confer with anybody. It's a possibility, we already have two or three members of the planning board that would be challenged in a biased situation. It would behoove you not to say anything, because if it gets down to less than four members that aren't challenged, it's gonna be referred to the courts for a decision. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Better not discuss that laggity one, maybe tell Mr.
The what?
Shoreland zoning.
Next meeting is.
Go put that down.
December, I can't see it.
Eight, December eight.
December eight?
Seven.
Seven?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, wait a minute, second Monday.
Second Monday, December fourteen.
Fourteen?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?